Good evening, everyone. Sorry for the delay here, trying to get organized at the last minute. I will call to order a Wilsonville City Council meeting for October 7 already, 2019, and request a roll call, please. Oh, it's 7:10.
Counselor Linville?
President.
Counselor West?
Here.
Counselor President Akervall?
Here.
Counselor Lehan?
Here.
Mayor Knapp?
Here. Thank you much. Nice to have a full council again. Would the audience please rise and join us in a pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for And council, I'm open to a motion on order of agenda, if it please.
Your honor, I move we approve the order of agenda.
Thank you. Sir, second?
I'll second.
Moved in second. We approve order of agenda. It has previously been published, and there are copies on the counter at the side of the room if anyone would like to see one of those. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye passes 5-0, bringing us to citizen input and community announcements, which is an opportunity for visitors to address council on anything not on the agenda. Also a time to address something that is on the agenda but not scheduled for a public hearing. Staff and council will make every effort to respond to questions raised during this portion, either before tonight's meeting ends or as soon as we can thereafter. I do not have any cards from anyone asking to speak at this point. Is there anyone that would like to speak under citizen input? And I see none, so I'm going to move on to mayor's business where we have several different things, starting with a very poignant, long-term kind of an effort that has been going on on how to eradicate polio around the world.
G'day, Mayor. City Council, Mark Ottenhead, Public Affairs Director, and I can introduce Pat Wolfram, who is the 2019 Wilsonville Rotary Club president this year, and he is here to speak with you tonight about the eradication of polio.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you, Mayor Knapp, council members, council members' families. I see you're here. Yeah. I wanted to make a few notes about why Rotary continues to shine a light on polio. Polio has not left us. It's still present, and it has the capability of spreading very rapidly if we don't suppress it, in fact eradicate it. In 1952, there were 60,000 children every year impacted in the U.S. with polio. There were tens of thousands afflicted with it, and 3,000 died. Three years later, the vaccines were in play, and for a 24-year effort in the United States, along with industrializing our sewage systems, it was eradicated in the U.S. So we haven't seen it here since 1969, excuse me, 1979. Yet nine years later, in the U.S., or excuse me, worldwide, there were still 350,000 cases every year. So the rest of the world that doesn't have the benefit of our infrastructure and our sewage systems still has polio. In 1988, the Rotary International, as well as some of our partners, initiated an eradication program. So in 30 years, we went from 350,000 cases down to 35, yet it's still there. We still need hundreds of millions of dollars every year, and armies of people to go apply vaccinations to newborns in these remote places in Afghanistan, Pakistan, and every other remote village in the U.S., or excuse me, around the world, to suppress it. When the newborn child shows up, they are a candidate to collect polio. So it can be eradicated. It cannot be cured, but it can be eradicated. And if we continue to apply the pressure, the Bill and Melinda Foundation is applying the pressure, they're matching every dollar we put in two-for-one. If we apply the pressure, we can eradicate this from the face of the earth, so the hundreds of millions we put in every year, and the armies of people that are doing this, can move towards better things for our world. And children will no longer be afflicted. So that's why Rotary continues to apply pressure, to shine a light on this. The Gates, Nobel Laureates, Desmond Tutu, there's many who support this effort. It is a worldwide effort. In the U.S., it's far away from us. It seems a remote thing, but the people that can least afford to have polio, these young children in impoverished countries, are the ones that get it. So we're asking, as you know, to proclaim World Polio Day on October 24th, and but I wanted to give you a note about why it's such an important thing to us.
Well, some of us are old enough to remember when polio was not eradicated in the U.S., and you know, you used to hear about it much more frequently than we do now. So I commend the Rotary Club as maintaining the focus on that. Counsel, any questions you would like to ask Mr. Wolfram this evening?
I have a quick one.
Counselor West?
Polio has had through public health and initiatives like yours, and supporting that we've been, like you said, incredibly successful, and almost eradicating it from the face of the earth. Is Rotary also looking at taking up other diseases or issues that may be coming up, that we deal with that are also frequent in the population and partnering with those also? Or do you currently deal with other diseases that affect, afflict communities? Do you also partner with those, try to eradicate those, or is it just polio your focus?
Polio is the international focus. We need to keep all of our wood behind one arrow. Once we eradicate it, then we have an amazing, amazing operation that can move to do big things worldwide for other things. Right now, polio is the international. I did forget one data point. If we stop the eradication efforts today, the estimate is that within 10 years, 200,000 children every year would be afflicted with a polio. So there's still a lot going on to suppress it, to keep it down. But if we stop, it will come back. In fact, just this year, it came back in the Philippines because there's ongoing wars where it's difficult to get to places, and people travel much quicker now, so someone afflicted with it can spread it very quickly where there's not vaccinated children. So it's there, we just need to suppress it. And yeah, I'm sorry, I kind of branched off, but there are local efforts to other type of programs, but nothing at international scale.
Well, I would love to read the proclamation then on World Polio Day, and then I will have a copy for you, and I'll let you take that back to Rotary. Whereas Rotary is a global network of 1.2 million neighbors, friends, leaders, and problem solvers who unite and take action to create lasting change in communities across the globe. And whereas the Rotary motto, "Service Above Self," inspires members to provide humanitarian service, follow high ethical standards, and promote goodwill and peace in the world. And whereas Rotary in 1985 launched Polio Plus, and in 1988 helped establish the Global Polio Eradication Initiative, which today includes the World Health Organization, U.S. Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, UNICEF, and the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation to immunize the children of the world against polio. And whereas polio cases have dropped by 99.9% since 1988, and the world stands on the threshold of eradicating this disease. And whereas to date Rotary has contributed more than 1. billion U.S. dollars and countless volunteer hours to protecting more than 2.5 billion children in 122 countries. And whereas Rotary is working to raise an additional $50 million per year, which would be leveraged for maximum impact by an additional $100 million annually from the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation. And whereas these efforts are providing much-needed operational support, medical staff, laboratory equipment, and educational materials for health workers and parents. And whereas in addition Rotary has played a major role in decisions by donor governments to contribute more than $8 billion to the effort. And whereas the Rotary Club of Wilsonville raised $7,400 during the 2019 Rotary Summer Concert Series, all of which will be contributed to the Polio Plus Fund. And whereas the Rotary Club of Wilsonville has raised over $100,000 over the past 15 years via the Rotary Summer Concert Series, all of which contributed to the Polio Plus Fund. And whereas the Rotary Club of Wilsonville proudly ranks as the number-one club in Northern Oregon for dollars per member donated to Polio Plus during the past 10 years. Now therefore, I, Tim Knapp, as Mayor of Wilsonville, Oregon, do hereby proclaim October 24, 2019, as World Polio Day, and I encourage all Wilsonville residents to join Rotary International and me in the fight for a polio-free world. So that is pretty significant stuff. Do we have a photo opportunity, or anybody to do it?
Sure. If they're doing a photo, you got a photo person?
[laughing]
What are we doing?
Can't advise them on here?
What's that?
You can't advise them on here?
They're shy. They're very shy.
All right. Thanks, General, sir. Thank you very much. All right. Thanks.
Okay. We have a couple of little items to take care of, given the reconstituted full membership of our council, Counselor Linville joining us. We have a couple of vacant liaison positions that we would like to coordinate on. One of them is the Willamette Falls Locks Commission, which deals with the Willamette Falls locks and whatnot. Mr. Ottenhead, did you have any presentation you wanted to make on this topic, or not?
G'day, Mayor. Members of council, Mark Ottenhead, Public Affairs Director. Not per se. You all conducted most of your appointments in January of 2019 this year with the resignation of Counselor Stevens and the appointment of Counselor Linville. We have the opportunity to make appointments now to the French Prairie Forum, Local Governments' Work Group, and to the Willamette Falls Locks Commission, which is a body that is appointed by the governor.
So we have not always done liaison appointments with formal actions. Do we need to take a formal action, or do we just need a consensus and an agreement by the member?
An agreement consensus is just fine.
All right. So Counselor Linville, you're on board with this at this point?
Yes.
You can do that?
Yes, I would be glad to take those appointments.
Okay. Counsel, are we good with letting her take that representation for us?
Absolutely. Yes.
Sounds good. I think you're in on that. We have one additional one, and we had Ms. Monahan. I didn't know if you wanted to talk about Community Enhancement Committee also. Would that be a surprise, Counselor Linville?
Yes.
It would be a surprise. Okay. You have not talked about.
Thank you, Mayor Knapp. I'm Zoe Monahan, Assistant to the City Manager. And just to remind you, the Wilsonville Metro Community Enhancement Committee, this is the committee that meets generally in the spring and awards grants to community projects. After the committee meets, it does come to the council for their approval of the projects, and it's a committee that's made up of four community members that have three-year terms, as well as two council members, as well as one of the metro counselors, and for us, it's councillor, Metro Councillor Craig Dirksen.
And so we've usually met two or three times a year. It's usually an early evening meeting after work kind of a thing, and we're allocating dollars that come to us through Metro's sharing program out of a tippage fee that Solid Waste pays, and it helps to fray the impact on communities that host the Solid Waste facilities like we do here in Wilsonville. And we have done several different good public projects with it. So we would welcome you as Counselor Stevens' replacement on that committee, should you be willing to do that.
I would be willing to do that. Thank you.
All right. That sounds good. So unless anybody wants to arm wrestle her for those, then I think you're on board.
Is there a second councillor on that?
Me.
Okay.
So at this point, that's what we've done. Okay, so we'll do that. Question, Counselor Akervall?
I was just looking at the item in our packet on this, and I noticed that Counselor Stevens was actually the alternate for the representative. Here comes another one. Sorry. For Greater Portland Inc. as well. I didn't know if...
Yeah.
...buy, or if we didn't need to, because it was an alternate. And I know you do have incredible attendance.
Yeah, though I'm gonna miss the next one, so, you know.
Are you? Oh, okay. I don't know. Was that just a...
Well, it's an alternate position, and we should probably talk more about that. And I have to say, I don't believe Suzie ever attended.
Attended, yeah.
Meeting as the alternate. So you can look at that two-way. One, we don't need an alternate, or two, you can volunteer to be the alternate and almost never have to go. But we should talk before we do that, if we could. But you are correct. That is another opening that is left. Okay, okay, okay. I think that that pretty well covers that. Upcoming meetings, oh geez, they won't even stop. Clackamas County Coordinating Committee is, let's see. This is retroactive, I think, that has been going on, if I can read mostly. The Clacks County Coordinating Committee has a subcommittee that meets on metro questions usually in advance of the J-Pact and M-Pact meetings, and the discussion right now has been about mobility policy and the regional flexible funds update. They're looking at flexible funds for the 2022, '23, '24 timeframe, somewhere right in there. So it's years ahead, they allocate money before it happens. J-Pact is also looking at the similar things, and also talking about the Regional Congestion Pricing Study update, which is dealing with potential for tolls on freeways, and how that could be done, and is looking at what those studies are saying. We had the League of Cities Annual Conference in Bend, and welcome all the councillors that were able to attend. We had workshops for councillors and for mayors there, some of which were very interesting. A presentation that was more succinct on the potential for a Cascadia earthquake was one of the ones that I particularly enjoyed seeing and helped clarify a lot of things. Wilsonville also held our traditional open house, and we had very nice attendance, I don't know, went on for, how long did it go on? Three or four hours? I mean, we had a lot of people from all over the state come, and we always do presentations with some posters and information about some of the major projects that are underway in Wilsonville, help people understand, you know, how we fit into the scheme of things. And I think it's very helpful on maintaining awareness of Wilsonville, you know, around the state through other communities. There were a lot of other seminars going on, and maybe when councillors do their presentations, if you have any wish to talk about any of your observations from League of Cities, you certainly can do that. Clackamas County Coordinating Committee itself is talking about how to use the new vehicle registration fee, including a 10% portion, which the county has voluntarily, with coordination with the cities, put into a strategic investment fund that they will use in different projects around Clackamas County. The parameters for how that will work and how the money will be invested has yet to be determined, essentially. You know, there's a lot of discussion about county roads that are at the urban-rural interface between the county and where they are moving into cities, especially as growth occurs. Examples of that might be Stafford Road going outside of Frog Pond and on into the county, as well as the problematic 65th-Lexan-Stanford Road intersection that's on the north edge up there, that certainly is going to need significant work here before too long, or within the foreseeable future, I guess I should say, because there's no funding assigned to that at all yet. Don't get your hopes up. Upcoming, we have the Westside Economic Alliance is holding one of their monthly breakfasts and is welcoming United States Senator Jeff Merkley will be there to talk, so we're looking forward to that this week. The Regional 2020 Transportation Funding Task Force is still meeting and talking about priorities for different corridors around the region, which might be funded through that mechanism. We are reviewing the flexible funds projects that might be submitted to Metro by the counties, and of course, because we're in both Washington County and Clackamas County, we're involved in those discussions on both ends of that, and we'll have to see how that goes. Those regional flexible funds are used for alternate modes of transportation, not roads, so that goes to pedestrian or bike, pet improvements, and coincidentally, some of it goes toward freight movement improvement projects. So there's all those different specialty areas that don't commonly get full consideration in regular transportation funding that flexible funds tries to fund. So there's absolutely nothing going on. What can I tell you? Let's see. I think that that is plenty from me. I would welcome comments from councillors, starting with Counselor President Akervall, if you wish.
Thank you. I just wanted to say to staff as well that as far as the LOC conference, what was it, last week, the week before, that it's, I mean, just how much I appreciate the opportunity to attend the conference, terrific amount of learning in the sessions, and also opportunity to get to know some of the other councillor members. And I just feel very grateful that the city staff coordinates and gets us all set up and registered, and thank you for that, because it is a great opportunity. Some of the sessions that when, kind of stand out in my mind was one that I attended on sustainability and some energy-saving efforts, both in the cities of Bend and Redmond, and kind of a comparison, and there are different approaches to actually very similar work, but different approaches to that. A session on SDCs, which was good, and also one on affordable housing initiatives and some of the work that's being done in Bend, and some of the creativity I think that they have brought to that as well. But overall, it was a very valuable time, and lots of learning, and just a good couple days, yeah. Oh, and I also wanted to talk about, let's see, mentioned this last week, I attended Korea's National Foundation Day celebration in Portland, which was October 3, and this was something that was new for me. But I attended, and we celebrated with the Council General Lee, who is in Seattle and was down from Seattle to host the event. And at our table sat with former State Senator John Lim, Mayor Ted Wheeler, and there was several Korean War veterans there as well. And it was a great opportunity to learn some about Korean Foundation Day and their history, and also kind of reflect on some of the connections and the current past projects between the different communities, and of course, one of which is the Korean War Memorial that's in our town center park. And the discussion, I think, with the Korean War veterans, hearing their respect and their celebration of some of the shared values, as well as, you know, catching up on what the many activities that they are continuing to do to serve. They're a very busy group of people, so that was a treat to be part of that.
Thank you very much. Counselor Lehan?
Yes, I just wanted to mention a couple of past things and a couple of upcoming things. One is that Mr. Leo and I did the McMiniman's presentation on, what do we call that, myths and milestones of the city of Wilsonville, and shot some holes in a few myths and came up with a few milestones. Anyway, we had a packed house, lots of people with lots of conversation and questions, so it was a lot of fun. One of the things we did cover was the very heavy German heritage of the city of Wilsonville in our road names and place names and et cetera. And so encouraged people to go to the first annual Oktoberfest, which was this last Saturday at the Piazza in Villebois, and it was very well-attended. I was pleased to see that because it was hosted by the Frog Pond Church, which used to be known as the German Church. So anyway, I was very, very happy that they had such a good turnout and excellent weather as well for Oktoberfest. Upcoming, I wanted to just mention, it's a little ways off, but you should definitely get on your calendar, the 26th of October at the Stein-Bouger Barn, and it's kind of at the closing down of that facility for the season. But at 8 o'clock in the morning, there is a 5K run and a kids' costume run there, where you get to run in a costume. I'm presuming adults can also...
I think they do, yes.
...run in costumes of some sort or another. And then, and if you don't want to be up at 8 o'clock, that very same day at the Stein-Bouger Barn, 9:30 to noon, is the Fall Harvest Festival, and it's a very popular event. There are wagon rides and farm animals and pumpkins and the things you would expect at a fall festival, and you should get the kids and wander on over there. And then, if you still have time, between 9 and 1, it's Bulky Waste Day, also on the 26th. So see, it will be such a busy day, you need to definitely get it on your calendar, during which time you can take your bulky waste to the facility on Ritter Road, one of our German names, and I believe deposit it there for a nominal fee or donation to the food bank.
All right.
Be that.
And you got your History Day picture, nice picture in the Wilsonville spokesman showing your crowd. Did you know that?
Oh, no, I didn't see that. I'll go look for it.
All right. Sounds good. Counselor West?
Counselor Lehan, I heard that your talk and Greg Leo's talk was fantastic. I couldn't attend, but it sounded like a great one, interesting one, and the rumor mill was talking about how really great it was, so thank you for doing that. I also got to attend the Oktoberfest at the Plaza Villebois.
Piazza.
Piazza, sorry. Thank you. The Piazza in Villebois. And it was also co-hosted by John Beddios' nonprofit, Veterans Outreach, with Post Traumatic Stress Syndrome, the Spartan Group, and with his board was there too, and it was a lot of fun. They had axe throwing. I did not get to do that because I got too gabby, but it was quite the hit. They expected maybe 500, and they blew it out with like 1,200 people. It was packed. And so next year, the planning is already in the works to make this quite a bit bigger and more spectacular, and it's a really great new event that is for really great nonprofit charities in our community. I had the honor today as just a private citizen of, on my own, to have a meeting with Universal Health Systems, and that was a fantastic meeting. One of their main guys flew in from Seattle, that develops hospitals all over the region in the West Coast. The CEO of Cedar...
Hills.
Thank you. Cedar Hills was their representative. Neron was there. Kim Thatcher was there. Legislative aides were there. And I hope to bring a report back to the council, because I think there's some pertinent things that came up for us to know about. I can even bring it up with Brian and just share with you guys about ways that we can help them be more successful, and they have specific ideas as a city to be successful as they try to get their second certificate of needs. And so I know all of us are passionate about this, and we have a history of being supportive of this, so I look forward to reporting back to you guys. We are planning a second meeting... We are planning a second meeting later this month, and we had a lot of positive conversations and interactions today, so I look forward to sharing that with you. Something close and near and dear to my heart, this season is, it is flu season, it is among us, and I know that the flu shot for many is controversial, but I want to take my time to do my little public service announcement. Flu and pneumonia are still top 10 causes and reasons for death in the United States. The World Health Organization says that clean water and vaccinations are the most significant modern miracles in medicine and have the largest impact on populations than any other outreach or initiative. And the flu shot, oh, this is my thing, is often, is not 100% effective, but it's still incredibly ethical. And the flu shot is, let's say it's 50% effective because they have a strands that they try to anticipate that we're vaccinating for. So I explained it to my patients like this, if you have to walk across that really long parking lot or really far down the street, you know there's a 50% chance of rain, you probably want to make sure you have an umbrella in Oregon. But if it doesn't rain, then you're still safe, and you had a kind of a 50/50 shot. And so the flu kind of works the same way, though we know that it does prevent the illness that can be very dangerous for vulnerable populations. We want to do our best to prevent it from ever happening, so please get your flu shot, talk to your practitioner. If you have any questions, feel free to email me, talk to a nurse in your clinical office where you get care, but get vaccinated and protect your community.
Thank you much. Council Linville, would you like to give a report?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to say thank you for the opportunity to attend the Council and Cities Conference in Bend this past week. It was an incredible opportunity for me to get to know some of the other public officials in our neighboring cities, and I was able to spend some time with folks that I think we will, that I will be spending some time with, that are on some of these leadership bodies that, and so I was able to pick their brains just a little bit. And knowing that I was going to possibly be appointed to the Locks, the Willamette Locks Commission was able to get a little bit of background on that, on what has happened with that project. I also enjoyed the opportunity to attend several of the sessions that I think were at least relevant to me as a new counselor. And particularly, there was one session that was for new counselors, and it was intended, I think, to help us with life balance, not just as new counselors, but as counselors that balance public work as well as personal issues and our work lives. The most beneficial part of that conference was that workshop was that at the end, we broke into groups and I pretty much was able to monopolize the conversation and ask the seasoned counselors and mayors, mostly counselors, but what are their biggest challenges? How do they, how are they addressing their, you know, their positions? So that was very, very helpful to me. So, and spending time with my colleagues as well was really beneficial. There were other, there was a great workshop that was, that focused on our obligations around House Builds 2001 and 2003, and that'll probably be some interesting conversation that will come down as that implementation happens. I also will be attending the breakfast with Senator Merkley this week on the 9th, and then also taking advantage of our council invitation to attend the Rotary Event on that evening at the World of Speed. And then I will be at the Friends of French Prairie Annual Meeting on the 17th and the Clackamas Cities Association Dinner on the 24th. So I have plenty of opportunity to continue to be engaged with our colleagues, and I look forward to those opportunities.
Sounds great. I'm so pleased that you're jumping right into all those different things and finding stimulation and good dialogue. That's really a big part of being able to work smoothly and understand how everything works, so thank you for your engagement on all of that. Why don't we jump into our formal work sessions, or excuse me, formal business, starting with our public hearing on Resolution 2768?
Resolution number 2768, a resolution authorizing a supplemental budget adjustment for fiscal year 2019, 2020.
So I need to do the formal statutory language for this, so I will call to order, well, that's not right either. Got the wrong one here. We'll call to order Wilsonville City Council Public Hearing on Resolution 2768, as has been read. Ladies and gentlemen, council will take public testimony tonight on a public hearing format. The hearing will be conducted as follows. First, city staff will present their report, then we will ask for testimony by proponents, opponents, and those neither in favor nor against the proposed resolution. If you wish to testify, please complete a speaker card from the counter at the side of the room, pass it forward to the city recorder. When called, come forward to the microphone, state your name and address and make your statement. I do request those providing testimony, not repeat testimony that has already been given to council. Simply indicating your agreement with certain prior testimony is entirely sufficient. Mr. Katko.
Hello, I'm Keith Katko, City's Assistant Finance Director. Tonight, we have a budget supplemental adjustment for council review. As allowed by Oregon State Statute, the city council is able to amend the adopted budget with either a supplemental transfer, which relocates the budget between light items in a fund's budget, or by a budget adjustment when the transfers exceed percentages for expenditure and contingency. A budget adjustment such as we have this evening requires a public hearing prior to approval. And so with that, this evening's request contains three components. The first component is our typical adjustment required every year for the rollover of capital improvement budgets, not completed in fiscal year 18, 19 cycle, but continue in this fiscal year. In total, 29 projects need to have the unused budgets rolled into the current year, and the rollovers total 6.2 million, and are detailed in the staff report on page four of the staff report. And these requested rollovers do not increase the overall project costs as detailed in the adopted budget document. Significant among the projects include the water treatment plant surge tank for $686,000, street maintenance for $2.2 million, and the ERP replacement project, which is the Enterprise Resource Planning Integrated Software for the city, for $566,000. Also included are three requests totaling $145,000 related to capital assets for the water treatment plant, including $40,000, which is a rollover request for the repair and replacement of the access gate at the water treatment plant. $50,000, again, is a rollover request for the HVAC system repair replacement for the admin building, and then $50,000 previously unforeseen expense to replace for existing active flow hydro cyclones. And these are the existing hydro cyclones that sand scoured for the past 17 years and just need to be replaced at the water treatment plant. Finally, the third component of this supplemental, is included in the budget request is $3,426,333 to participate in the employer incentive fund. The employer incentive fund was passed into law by the 2018 Oregon Legislature and is a mechanism by which the state will match 25% local funding up to a point for the city to create a PERS side account, which would be amortized over the period of time mitigating the city's proportionate share of the system's unfunded actuarial liability. With the $3.4 million in local funds, and that is the maximum contribution that the city would receive corresponding matching funds by the state, the state would match that, $865,583, and then therein the city would have a $4,282,916 side account. The side account becomes an asset of the PERS trust, but provides rate relief only for the city of Wilsonville. So that is the budget supplemental request.
Thank you. Council, any questions for staff with regard to this, especially wanting to be sure that we are clear on the PERS component, which is an optional component. We had some discussion upstairs, but the public was perhaps not privy to that, so we want to be sure that we have full understanding. Council Linville.
Well, I have just a question, a point of order. Are all of these going to be dealt with under one motion, or do they need to be dealt with separately? Under one motion, okay.
One supplemental motion containing all these components.
Okay, that's great. Well, I just wanted to make a comment about the PERS contribution because it appears at first blush that it is an incredibly large amount of money that the city would put forward for this side account. But an incredible opportunity for the city to earn 25% additional monies, 25% of that in additional monies that would be added into a fund that we will use for covering those, that liability for PERS. In addition to that, I think it needs to be pointed out that the city of Wilsonville is fortunate that it has the ability, because of the fiscal planning, that it's done to be able to do this. There are other cities and municipalities that could not take advantage of this opportunity if they had not done the kind of planning and had those resources available. So while it sounds like it's a, it's a large amount of money and that, in fact, individual budgets will contribute to that amount besides the general fund, I think we are fortunate that we're able to do it.
Thank you. Any other questions that staff needs to help clarify? Is that your number? No, I'm sorry. Council West.
Yeah, it is a big dollar amount, and I would tend to totally agree with Counselor Linville. I'm just kind of curious in a practical, like, how we're going to feel this, because it is, it's a chunk of money, and a lot of it's coming from a lot of different departments and a large amount from the general fund. What is that pinch, how are we going to feel that? And is this just a one-time opportunity, is there future opportunities to continue to, does a state plan on allowing cities to do this going on in the future for those big looming costs? And on a practical, how we're going to feel it at home, what does that look like?
As far as the state goes, I don't really know. The legislature appropriated $100 million to provide these matching funds for this, this period of time. It's hard to say what they would do in the future. Basically, what this is going to allow us to do is apply to the incentive employer fund in December, once we have the authority to do it. As far as how it's going to affect various city funds, like was mentioned, the largest hit is for the city's general fund, but every operating fund shares in the contribution. And that sharing is going to affect some funds a little, that are already kind of on a watch list, which include the, a finance watch list, including the Stormwater Operating Fund, which is already kind of, has a lot of demands on its contingency and its fund balance. Certainly, the general fund can handle it. But it's definitely an opportunity, there's opportunity costs for everything. By using the incentive fund, we are buying down our PERS costs for the next 20 years, but we lose control of that money in the short term. So I guess I would answer that certain funds are going to be able to handle it a little more easier, including the general fund, because we have built up contingencies for this kind of unexpected opportunity or unexpected risk that we also at times face, so.
And I guess that leads to my follow-up question is, if we have other funds that are stronger, then can we insulate the funds that are kind of on a watch list and allow the stronger funds to take more of the hit, like the general fund maybe to do a little bit more to protect this other, these other funds that just maybe don't have, aren't robust enough at this point to be able to handle that? Is that a strategy we could do, or why is it, why did you choose to do a little bit through all of these? Why was that, was that thought process?
It's based on the current kind of payroll expense per operating fund. So there's people that work in the Stormwater Operating, so that's their proportionate allocated share. Certainly, the council could at times use the general fund for a myriad of purposes, and it's been done in the past where the general fund has loaned money to the Stormwater Operating Funds at really, you know, really great rates, and that's paid back over time. So that's a strategy the city's used in the past and probably will use in the future. So there is some, there is some capability of uses, especially the general fund. Other funds have a lot more restrictions that cannot be used outside of their, you know, legal or designated purpose.
Thank you. Mr. Rahad, did you have some clarification for?
Yeah, let me just see if I can maybe clarify just a tad bit. Keith is right, we pay for personnel out of the particular, a particular fund, and so that's why the PERS costs are associated with that fund. So we have employees that the bulk of their work is done in the general fund, therefore they are paid out of the general fund, therefore their PERS costs come out of that general fund. Same thing holds true for the transit fund, the Stormwater Fund, the building fund, et cetera. So they all have allocated positions that are paid for out of that fund. That's why the costs are associated with those. Yes, we do have funds that are on the watch list, and the finance department's done a really good job of kind of monitoring those funds over the course of time, and so does the building department. They monitor those funds, and will continue to do that, especially on that fund that is, you know, kind of been on the, on the watch list a little bit, and maybe taking more of a hit due to this, due to their kind of PERS aspect of it. So that's something that we'll continue to monitor.
And before I go to the next question, I'd just like to clarify for the public that the reason the Stormwater Fund has been on the watch list per se is that we've had several major projects that had to be done with Stormwater, especially at outfalls going into the Willamette River, where we have an obligation to maintain certain quality there. And we have undertaken to make remedies to some of those problems that should be long-term remedies, but we've had to bite the bullet and do those because they're needed in the short run. And so that's what's kind of, you know, caused us to have concerns about the Stormwater Fund. But we are handling that, and I think that we will continue to do so into the future and should be able to grow that fund back to where it's a little more stable, so. Council Linville, another question?
I guess one of the questions that might be asked is, is there a lost opportunity for the funds by sending them for, you know, by prepaying, so to speak? And there is a return on that investment, is there not? And that would be great if you could clarify what that is.
Certainly, with immediate investment return is the 25% matching funds, but it's not, once we turn the money over into the side account, we just can't take that 25% out. I mean, so that side account is used to mitigate, is amortized over the life of what is called the unfunded actuarial liability, and that is a 20 to 25-year liability. So the side account is amortized against that liability over that period of time, and we, the PERS provides a, I guess- and the PERS provides a, I guess it's called, I don't know what the exact name, it's an employer rate, rate of return Excel formula spreadsheet that allows you to project the savings that will be generated through this incentive fund. And just looking at the cash flows over that 20-year period, the internal rate of return would be in the proximity of around 8% to 9% over those 20 years. So if you conceptualize this as an investment, that would generate 8% to 9% over those years, and that's a pretty good sustainable rate of return. So.
Thank you.
Don't know any of us that might not be thinking really strongly about investing personal money if you could see 8% to 9% return per year for the next 20 years. That's a pretty strong return in what's available today. Any other questions? I have not received any public speaker cards. Is there any member of the public that would like to speak on this public hearing item? I'm seeing none, so I'm going to close the public hearing and ask counsel. What is your preference with regard to Resolution 2768?
Your Honor, I move to approve Resolution Number 2068, 2768.
Thank you.
I'll second the motion.
Second, we approve Resolution 2768. Discussion. Guess we've had a little discussion. It's an opportunity. The question was asked whether the state is going to do this in subsequent years. We have no way to know. Right now, it appears this may be a one-time opportunity. Yeah, no guarantees. We'll have to see. But it would cause us to put aside the $3 million, what is it?
2.4.
$3.4 million, and it would be in a side account that would reduce our PERS liability proportionally year by year for the next 20 years. And that would be the argument in favor of it. I guess the argument opposed would be if we felt like it was more valuable to retain that money in reserves where it's currently located, or had some other urgent project we were going to undertake to do it. Counsel West.
I just want to say really quickly that I want to acknowledge we're kind of, in a way, getting to stand on the shoulders of previous councils and staff and people that have been here, probably even before Counsel Akervall, myself, and Counsel Linville. And so I'm really glad that we have this opportunity to kind of address and be prudent and judicious and really trying to be responsible going forward on how to meet a real big issue that a lot of local cities and jurisdictions are going to face. So I'm really grateful that we have been fiscally sound and responsible and have made that kind of a hallmark of who we are as a city. So for everybody else that has served on this council or worked for the city, and that's been part of their mission to allow us to do this today, thank you.
Counsel Akervall.
I'll just add on to that as well. I don't know if you mentioned the Budget Committee, but they play a big role in this as well.
All of them.
Yes. And I think, you know, my comments have already been made, kind of been our question time. I agree that, you know, this is an opportunity for us to work within the framework that we have. And we are fortunate that we can make this move and, you know, make this investment. And it's looking down the road at what are the responsibilities of down the road, and how can we, you know, continue to be careful with the money and, you know, both take the opportunity of some of the money from the state now, but also down the road, how can we set ourselves up for weathering what is to come as well? So I applaud that move, I guess.
Anything else? I guess I would just offer a little context. It wasn't all that long ago, because I can remember, when the council decided that it was important that we set reserve standards, and we implemented programs within the city that said we would set aside money and we would try to achieve certain reserve standards. And that has stood us in good stead, and not all of our neighboring jurisdictions are able to do that. So long-range policy, you know, is something that, you know, you can't always see exactly how it's going to benefit you, and yet if you can see how it is the prudent thing to do, you know, sometimes opportunities such as this opportunity arise then that we can benefit from having taken that prior position that, you know, gives us some latitude of action we might not have otherwise had. So I think it's a prudent and helpful thing to do for Wilsonville's situation with regard to PERS. It doesn't solve anything once and for all, but it's a prudent step in the right direction in my view. So, okay. So if there's no other discussion desired, we have a motion and a second with regard to Resolution 2768 for approval. I will call for the vote at this point unless there's anything else that needs to be said. If not, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Passes 5-0. Thank you very much. That will bring us to continuing business on ordinance 838.
Ordinance Number 838 on second reading. An ordinance of the city of Wilsonville declaring and authorizing the vacation of an approximately 2,775 square foot stub of southwest Cherbourg Lane, Public Street right-of-way north of southwest Berlin Avenue, in Vilebois, legally described in Attachment 3. And I would just note for the record that I'm advised that since the first reading, we've received no additional comments.
Okay. See Mr. Pauli in the audience. Is there any additional information that counsel should have from planning? Seeing him shaking his head no. Any additional questions counsel might have with regard to this? We had discussion prior, recommendation out of planning, and we're in alignment with that on this ordinance as proposed. So.
Your Honor, I move to adopt ordinance Number 838 on second reading.
I'll second.
Moved in second, we adopt 838 on second reading. Any other discussion that the council would like to have? At second reading, I'll call for then a roll call vote, please.
Counsel Linville?
Yes.
Aye.
Counsel West?
Aye.
Counsel President Akervall?
Yes.
Counsel Lehan?
Yes.
Mayor Knapp?
Yes. Passes 5-0. Thank you very much. Bringing us to city manager's business, but in the city manager's absence, we have Assistant City Manager Draw.
Thank you, Mayor and counsel. So just one thing tonight, if any of you are attending the multi-city equity summit or are planning to attend that in October, will you please let Zo know? I want to keep track of how many of you are going to be there. They've allotted some spots to the city of Wilsonville, as I understand it, so it'd be good for us to know how many of you are actually coming. So if you are.
Dates again?
In fact, I will pass out.
Okay.
19th of October.
A flyer to you, yes. It is on the 19th. It's on the 19th from 8 to 4. And if you have any other questions, I'm passing around a flyer here. If there's any other questions that you have, certainly let me know, and I can certainly forward those on to the folks that are kind of sponsoring this event. Last I heard was that they've got potentially 200 folks that are going to be attending it. So it sounds like a good attendance.
All right, sounds good. And we're hopeful City Manager Cosgrove will be back on his feet here soon.
Yes.
Anything further from City Manager's office?
Nothing further.
All right, legal business?
I have some tonight. The first thing I want to talk about is we got a decision from the Land Use Board of Appeals on the appeal of Tuolotan's comprehensive plan and zone map change regarding, with respect to Basalt Creek. As you recall, we filed an intervenor's petition in that case and argued for Tuolotan's position along with Tuolotan, as did Metro. Washington County also signed off on Tuolotan's brief, and so we all appeared at the hearing. And Lubbock just last week ruled in our favor, so there is still the ability of the petitioner to appeal to the Court of Appeals. We're hopeful that that won't happen, and that should allow planning on Basalt Creek to move forward. So that's a good case to have, a good ruling for us, for Tuolotan and for Wilsonville, since we have, you know, these companion plans. So it's nice to have that one behind us, hopefully. And that moves us to the next matter that we may or may not have before Lubbock, which is the Aurora Airport matter. As you recall, last week, the council gave staff two directives. One was to submit testimony for this upcoming, for lack of a better term, reapproval process for the Aurora State Airport Master Plan update. And I believe testimony was given to all of you at the beginning of the evening. It's an October 3 letter from Wilsonville, signed by the mayor, outlining the city's concerns with the process that has gone on thus far since 2012 with respect to that master plan for consideration by the Oregon Department of Aviation at their upcoming hearing in Sun River on Halloween. So that is there for everybody to look at if you hadn't seen it before. Today in the mail, I got several pleadings with respect to the Aurora Airport-Lubbock case. The city of Aurora came in to the case by filing an amicus brief outlining their concerns with the airport, and in particular stressing the need, if this goes forward, for that property to be annexed into the city of Aurora, so that city services are provided for it. And since we talked about intervening, several other parties have elected to intervene, including the Aurora Airport Improvement Association, Bruce Bennett, Wilson Construction Company, Inc., Anthony Allen Helbling, and Mark Gardner. They're all represented by a single council. And then the state, of course, is also named, as, you know, the Department of Aviation is also the respondent, and so the Department of Justice is representing the state in the case. The Department of Justice and the intervenors on the side of the Department of Justice both filed motions to dismiss the case. Not surprisingly, as we discussed, this is an unusual hearing because there wasn't a traditional land use hearing held. There was two letters from the new director of the Oregon Department of Aviation. The first letter basically stating that the master plan had not been finalized, and then the second, a second letter correcting that, stating that, in fact, it had been. That letter was used as the basis for the appeal by the Friends of French Prairie. And the argument being made now is that that letter was not a land use decision, and therefore this case is not properly before the Oregon Department, or before the Land Use Board of Appeals. And that's an argument that we expected to be made, and that argument may prevail. But what will come out of this will be discovery, a little bit more discovery of everyone's positions, and perhaps give us a better understanding of where we want to go if this needs to go further with the FAA or with the courts. Or Lubbock may decide to accept it. But I think, you know, we should be prepared that Lubbock may determine that this is not within their jurisdiction. So we also got today a lengthy 30-page testimony that was submitted on behalf of the various airport groups for the hearing at the end of, or for the Department of Aviation's meeting at the end of October. And I will share that with anyone who's interested in having a copy of it. So that's kind of the latest on what's going on with the Aurora Airport. I don't know if you have any questions on either Basalt Creek or this case, but if you do, happy to answer them to the best of my ability.
Okay. Counsel, any questions at this time for City Attorney Jacobson? Lot of it is seeing how things develop, I guess.
Yeah, so right now, the airport's all in procedural mode. Basalt Creek, it's a good result for us. We'll hope it stays there.
What's the appeal timeframe?
30 days.
30 days. If it's not appealed, then it's final?
Yeah. Now, that being said, either city, Wilsonville or Tuolotan, at some point in the future can elect to change their mind with respect to zoning of any of the property. And if that should happen, then that could throw another wrench into the plans. But the position Tuolotan did take this last time around is that the cities had worked on this for a long time together, and everybody had agreed to the Metro arbitration, and so it was in the best interest of both cities to work, continue to work together and try and make this plan work. So I'm optimistic, based on that, that the relationship can be built to be stronger and firmer going forward, and that will get some actual good development going in out there.
Okay, sounds good. Any other questions we want to ask? I remind the council that we have a brief budget hearing in front of the Urban Renewal Agency to do immediately following this meeting. If there's nothing else, though, for counsel, I'm going to call adjourn at 8:16. Does anyone need a break, or should we move directly into urban renewal?
Let's go.
Good to go? Okay, let's do that.
Fast our bedtime.
I will call to order a Wilsonville Urban Renewal Agency meeting for October 7, 2019 at 8:17 PM, and request a roll call.
Member West?
Here.
Member Akervall?
Here.
Member Lehan?
Here.
Member Linville?
Here.
Chair Knapp?
Here. And that then brings us to citizens' input, which is an opportunity for visitors to address the Urban Renewal Agency Board on anything not on the agenda, also a time to address things that are on the agenda but not scheduled for public hearing. Is there any member of the public that would like to speak at this time? And I'm seeing none, so I will ask for the consent agenda.
Minutes of the July 1, 2019 Urban Renewal Agency meeting.
Thank you. Is there a motion on consent?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the consent agenda as read.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved in seconded. We approve consent agenda as read. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Passes 5-0. Bringing us to our public hearing, URA Resolution 303.
A resolution authorizing a supplemental budget adjustment for fiscal year 2019, 2020.
So here again, there's statutory language, and I will call to order a Wilsonville Urban Renewal Agency public hearing on URA Resolution 303, as has been read. Ladies and gentlemen, the agency will take public testimony tonight in a public hearing format as follows. First, staff will present their report, then we will receive testimony by proponents, opponents, and those neither in favor nor against the proposed resolution. If you wish to testify, please complete a speaker card from the counter at the side of the room, pass it forward to the city recorder. When called, come forward to the microphone, state your name and address, and make your statement. I do request those providing testimony not repeat testimony already given, simply indicating you agree with a certain prior speaker's testimony is entirely sufficient. Mr. Katko?
Once again, Keith Katko, City's Assistant Finance Director. So tonight, we have a budget supplemental adjustment for the board's review. As allowed by Oregon State statute, the board is able to amend the adopted budget with either a supplemental transfer, which reallocates budget between line items in a fund's budget, or by a budget supplemental, or by a budget adjustment when the transfers exceed percentages set for expenditures in contingencies. A budget adjustment, such as we have this evening, requires a public hearing prior to approval. So this evening's request contains just one item related to the rollover of a capital improvement project not completed during the fiscal year 2018-19 cycle. This requested rollover does not increase the overall project cost as detailed in the adopted budget document. The single rollover request is for $177,000, $178, or $78 for the Two's Road, 110th Graham's Ferry Road.
Ferry Road project, which is funded through available contingencies with the Westside Urban Renewal Capital Fund. So that is the single budget adjustment.
Thank you. Any questions for staff with regarding to this urban renewal supplemental budget adjustment? Seeing none, I will call for public testimony. Is there any member of the public that would like to testify at this time on the proposed I'm seeing none in the room, so I'm going to close the public hearing and ask the board, what is your pleasure with regard to URA Resolution 303?
Your Honor, I move to approve URA Resolution Number 303.
Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved in second. We approve Resolution 303. Discussion or questions or comments? Fairly routine in the way the world works, that things don't always get wrapped up in the budget year, and we have to continue with them until they're done, and that requires us carrying forward. Therefore, I will ask for the vote at this time. All in favor of the motion to approve Resolution 303, please say aye.
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 Passes 5-0. Any other business? I will call the Urban Renewal Agency adjourned at 8:21. Thank you very much.